Give us our many sins and we ask these things in your precious name. I'm in.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I guess I should have pulled this down. You don't pull that down, it doesn't really work, does it? I always forget. Wait for Commission of Fair Call. And I'd like to welcome everybody to this Commissioners' Meeting. We'll have a public hearing. Let me take this opportunity to thank you all for coming out. I tell you, government really does work when citizens participate. So, I want to thank you all for coming out here and being a part of this. Let me do a recognition of Mayor Billah Horn from Stedman. And I think, thank you, Mr. Horn, and former City Councilperson, Mr. Mark Kendrick is in the place. But everybody's important here tonight, so thank each and every one of you all for coming out. We will, I guess I will open the public hearing and I will call on the manager to give us the instructions. Please listen carefully because this is the way we will conduct this meeting tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the public forum this evening is regarding the fiscal year 2018 recommended budget. Speakers will be acknowledged by the Board in the order in which their name appears on the sign-up sheet. Please address the Board and begin your remarks by stating your name and your address. Each speaker will be given three minutes. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. This public comment period or a public hearing is not intended to require the Board to answer any questions. Speakers should be courteous in their language and presentation and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? How many?
We do. We have a total of twenty-six speakers.
And if she calls your name, if you come to the podium, make sure you can adjust the mic up or down, but please speak into the mic. Madam Clerk, if you give us the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Alizadea Ray.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, my name is Alizadea Sebastian Ray. I live at thirty-three eighty-three Hawthorne Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina. I come here tonight to speak to you about the libraries. My library journey started in South Florida, specifically Nova Southeast University, which is a college, it's also a library. We moved to Hope Mills, North Carolina in the summer of two thousand twelve. The library is different, but it still has the same goals, to provide their communities with books, movies, CDs, and of course, computers and programs. For example, my partner and I, Jayden Grotto, received first place at Regional Science Olympiad for Anatomy Physiology and twenty-third at state competitions at NSC State. And it's great because we use the library for his books, we use the library for the rooms to study in. And the library just provides so much to everyone, and it's great that that is a free organization that anyone can go to. And the library has helped me in my academic development. The first week of May, I was selected to be a two thousand seventeen NCLA Student Library Ambassador. So, in that program, you pick Student Library Ambassadors from North Carolina, and you go to Washington DC to speak to congressmen. And that was a two-day trip, which is, that was my third time being elected to do that. And I've really enjoyed speaking tonight, and thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is Willie Wright.
My name is Willie Wright, and I live at one-nine-six Diorock Court, twenty-eight-three-eleven. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the library. Commissioners and Mrs. Cannon, I think most of you are aware that I have been associated with the library system over two decades. I started off as a branch rep, then I went to the Friends of the Library Board, the Trustee Board, and now I'm on the Endowment Committee. The library is a valuable asset to our community. And I'm asking you to minimize the budget reduction for the next fiscal year. Why? Well, number one, the library assists individuals in Cumberland County to get jobs, making more productive citizens, and also adding to the financial base of Cumberland County. Two, the library has computers. Now, most of you know that I was in the educational system in Cumberland County. And at our school, twenty percent of the families did not have computers. Thirdly, the library assists with early literacy, that is, to have preschool programs to teach skills to students. All of you are familiar with the Children's Summer Reading Program, and most of you know about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And our library system assists the schools with that program. I understand that we won't be able to give a great deal of growth to the library, but let's try to maintain it as close as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our third speaker is Glenda Dai.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Dai, and I live at two-ninety-one Steamboat Court. And I've lived in Cumberland County all of my life, and I own a home over off of Morganton Road in Wessex Place. To start off, as a citizen, I just wanted to say I know it's hard to make decisions to raise taxes. And so, I just wanted to say, you know, that I support the tax strategies that have been proposed by the county manager's budget proposal, and that the, want to see that the various services that are supported by the budget are supported as much as possible. But the other thing, as, in my work life, I am the Director of the Area Agency on Aging, so I'm here to speak on behalf of the older adults in Cumberland County. That I'm the Director of the Area Agency on Aging of the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments. The Area Agency on Aging and the Cumberland County Council on Older Adults, the two agencies, we are the Aging Department for Cumberland County. And that together, our agencies have been proposed a funding cut of forty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. And a portion of the funding that the Area Agency on Aging gets supports the services, the Home and Community Care Block Grant Services that also support the Council on Older Adults. So, you're seeing a funding cut in both, in services for the block grant when you affect both agencies. I realize that sacrifices have been made in many areas, but we also know that the number of the people that are turning sixty, which is the age that we can serve with Older Americans Act dollars, which the county funds are matching, the number are getting, you know, growing every day, and that people's lifespans are longer, and that the people that we serve are majority seventy and eighty years old. And so, and, you know, we're getting proposed funding cuts, you know, left and right, everywhere, you'll hear. So, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the older adults and just hope that we can minimize that reduction to those services.
Thank you.
Our fourth speaker is Ann Hodges.
Hello. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Anna Hodges Smith, and I live at one-oh-eight Peachtree Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I'm here tonight as a representative of the Arts Council of Fayetteville and Cumberland County. My constituents and I, the rabby crowd in the back, are here to just say thank you. We thank you for your continued support of the Arts Council. We thank you for your continued trust. By placing funding in our hands, we try to be excellent stewards of your funding. And we try to make sure that the folks that we provide funding to are just as accountable as we are. So, we just really, really appreciate everything you do. Without your support, it just, it represents so much more than just dollars to the bottom line. It allows us to touch over five hundred people's lives in this area alone through festivals, performances, exhibits, programs, classes, all through cultural arts. It allows us to educate, inspire, and touch many people in many ways. That includes the Mr. Mina Program, a diversion program for our at-risk youth. Thank you very much, Chairman Adams, who brought that to us. And I believe we're right in the process of completing one of those sessions, and it's been fairly successful, so thank you. We also were able to allocate dollars to eight municipalities within our county. By giving them those dollars, they were not even matching funds or grants, we were able to let them provide cultural arts programs and services to their communities within the county. We sustain over seventeen hundred full-time equivalent jobs, and we add nearly fifty-four million dollars into our local community, not just the Arts Council, but the cultural arts industry. We're getting ready to have a new study out by the Arts, by the Americans for the Arts and the Arts Economic Prosperity Study, and so we're looking forward to seeing those new figures very, very soon. And I think they'll be quite as impressive. We reached thousands of students in forty-one schools throughout Cumberland County and Fort Bragg through arts education programs. We are, excuse me, we reach over fifty-four schools in Cumberland County and throughout, in Fort Bragg, through arts programs. We're able to support forty-one nonprofit agencies and organizations through grants, marketing, and technical assistance. And right now, we're getting ready to finish up a state-of-the-art website, and it's going to be a true benefit to all citizens within our community. It's going to have a searchable cultural arts calendar that you'll be able to access and find cultural arts events within our county, not just events put on by the Arts Council, but by other agencies as well. It'll also position us-
I'll let you finish that sentence.
Okay, I'll finish that sentence.
Finish that sentence.
It's going to allow us to attract people from outside the market as well and show them what a good, strong community we are. But I just wanted to say, thank you!
Thank you.
Our fifth speaker is Jackie Taylor.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jackie Taylor, and I live at ten-forty Old Leander Road in Fayetteville. And tonight, I am here basically to beg you not to cut anything from the Meals on Wheels program that's provided through the Council on Older Adults. And across the board, fifteen percent cut would not be good for our program. As you may know, there are several routes all over Cumberland County that volunteers deliver meals on a daily basis. I personally deliver meals on Friday on the Stedman route. Before I started delivering meals, I had no idea how great this need was. I'm here tonight to make sure that you know how great this need really is. Many of our clients have trouble coming to the door just to get their meal that's ready to eat. What that means is, if we don't provide them with a meal, the chances of them being able to leave the house, to go to the grocery store, cook that meal, get it back home, are pretty slim. In addition to the meals that we deliver, we provide someone that they can see and talk to on a daily basis. And many of our clients don't see anyone but us for the entire day or the entire week. It's our responsibility as a community to help these people that are in need. They've paid their taxes, and they deserve to have this very basic need met. Thank you for your time in considering how this particular cut could be avoided. Please remember that all nonprofits are wonderful in their own way, but this particular one is providing a very basic need. It's a nutritious meal that they likely wouldn't have otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our sixth speaker is Steve O'Connor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Steve O'Connor. My address is three-oh-five Troll Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two-eight-three-oh-three. I've been a Cumberland County resident since nineteen eighty-four. I've been practicing law in Fayetteville for thirty-three years. I'm here to speak in favor of saving the Law Library. For the sake of full disclosure, my wife is a Law Librarian. She's been working there for twenty-seven years as the sole staff person. But I'm here speaking as a citizen of Cumberland County and as a lawyer who has regularly used the Law Library since nineteen eighty-four. Let me give you a few facts about the Law Library. And I have a copy of a session law here to hand up. It was established by a private session law of the General Assembly in nineteen fifty-three, House Bill eleven-eighty-six, Chapter eleven-fifty-eight. The proposed budget asked you to eliminate what the General Assembly created. According to the main library's website, the Courthouse Law Library was taken over by the county law, by the county library system in nineteen seventy-four. Therefore, the county commissioners have been approving its funding for over forty-three years. There is funding for the Law Library other than through the regular general county budget. Under state law, facilities fees collected by the clerk of superior courts on lawsuits filed are supposed to go into a fund to the county to pay for things, including the Law Library if you have one. In fact, the private bill that I've handed up says that one dollar of every facilities fee on civil cases filed and special proceedings is supposed to go to the Court Library Fund, which shall be used solely for the purpose of equipping, maintaining, and operating said library. My calculation of the facilities fees for county year twenty sixteen is over ten thousand dollars. I query if that can be used for anything else other than the Court Law Library. How many people does the Court Law Library serve? Based on library system door counts, over the past eleven months, it has served eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-five people. It's on track to serve over twelve thousand two hundred people in the fiscal year twenty-seventeen. That's an increase of forty percent over twenty sixteen, an increase of sixty-three percent over fiscal year twenty-fifteen. The door count today was a hundred and two people in the Law Library. Now, what kind of staff and resources serves twelve thousand two hundred people a year with business booming? There's one full-time library associate, a total budget of ninety-seven thousand dollars, which includes personnel, personnel benefits, and all costs of the library. That's frankly less than, you know, the proposed budget for the cost of new carpet for the North Regional Library. Now, if I had more time, I could explain why the county Law Library is so important, but I would say it's extremely efficient and usage is way up over the past two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cherry Beth Thomas.
Yeah, take everything. Yeah, come on.
Good evening. My name is Cherry Beth Thomas. My address is seven-eight-eight-two Adrian Drive, Davidson, North Carolina, two-eight-three-one-four. My name is Cherry Beth, once again, and I am or have been employed with the dental clinic at the Cumberland County Health Department for two years now. I am the patient relations representative there. My child is also a patient at the dental clinic, so I'm coming tonight as an employee and also as a resident and patient of the clinic. With all the information that's been floating around in the papers, it has been made to seem that the dental clinic has been without a dentist since June twenty-sixteen. And forgive me if I get emotional. I don't know if it's been made aware to anyone that we have had three dentists who have applied for the position, and for some reason unknown to us, they were not getting the position. One dentist who was actually working, we had locum dentists in the meantime, and that dentist was actually working with us, one of which applied for the position. During the absence of a permanent dentist employed through Cumberland County Health Department, we have had the locum dentist, as I mentioned, who enabled us to be able to keep treating patients. Yes, patient numbers were not as high, which was made a point to us as a permanent dentist. However, does anyone know the actual process that it takes when a new dentist comes on board? We can't just throw a full patient load on them, especially if they are a new practicing dentist, which one of our locums was new to the dental world. I also have been told by county HR that there is a resolution for patients who have Medicaid in our county to get dental care. And a lot of the clinics that they said that they would refer our patients to, they're not in operation. Stedman Family Dental Center is one of their options. They don't even have a dentist right now and are not operating at all. Also, I want, the biggest point I want to make is, okay, for Medicaid, we have a resolution, but what about the people who fall between the cracks? I make too much to qualify for Medicaid, but I make too little to afford dental insurance. What happens to those patients? We are the only dental clinic in Cumberland County who has a sliding scale fee for patients who are uninsured and who come, who can come and get care for their children, and we are the first line of defense for those children to get treated with their care, their dental care. That is all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our eighth speaker is Melissa Polk.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Polk, and I reside at fifty-six-thirty-one Shenandoah Drive. I won't take up much of your time because my coworker, she really said it all. She took part of my, what I had to say tonight. But I have been employed with the dental clinic for twenty-two years, and the dental clinic is my baby. I've been there through the good and the bad of it, and I know that the community, the children that we've helped, a lot of underprivileged children, and we are on the transportation line. A lot of our patients have to catch two or three buses just to get to us. And we've been told that there are places, other places for them to go, but if those places, there are other places for them to go, we would like to know where those places are, that they're gonna go, and who's gonna get them to those places, because we have started their care. And if we don't finish their care, that is abandonment. And we don't want to be responsible for abandoning the children of Cumberland County. As I've said, the dental clinic has been around since nineteen seventy-four, before my time. But I have been a loyal employee to Cumberland County, and I would like for Cumberland County to give me that loyalty back. And I pray that you do not cut the funding for the dental clinic and that the dental clinic gets to live on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our ninth speaker is Delveria Marinco.
Can you spell that?
D-E-L, comma, V-E-R-I-A. Last name, M-A-R-E-N-C-O.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Delveria Marinco. I live at fifteen-fifteen Dean's Croft Place, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two-eight-three-one-four. I am the dental hygienist for the Cumberland County Department of Public Health. I provide dental screening for the fifty-two elementary schools in our county. I am the first point of contact for children who have abscess, infection, or decay that are in pain. Sometimes, I'm the first dental professional that, to assess children who have never been to a, you know, a dental office before. I screen, on average, a hundred and sixty to three-hundred and sixty students per elementary school, regardless of insurance. Okay, so it's free. We see pre-k, kindergarten, second grade, fifth grade, and any self-contained EC. You know, they do have the dental van out there now, I know. But I think when they visit, they're doing mostly operative work and cleanings, which they're also, you know, billing the student's insurance for. But, you know, in all, in the midst of all that, I'm just wondering, you know, when is there gonna be time for the other students to be screened who may, you know, fall through those cracks? And I just also wanted to say-
Thank you. What happened to my lights? They just kinda went. You can, she got how much?
Oh, okay.
You got a minute thirty-four.
Okay, yeah, and I just also wanted to add, you know, I've been at the Cumberland County Health Department Dental Clinic for three years now. I've gotten to meet a lot of great kids, meet a lot of first-time, you know, kids that are coming to the dentist, and just having the opportunity to make them feel comfortable with coming to the dentist, that is a major milestone in their life, because that's something that they're gonna need throughout their whole life. And, you know, if you don't take care of your oral health, that can cause other issues in your body. So, that's, it's really, really important, and I just pray that you guys do consider keeping the dental clinic open. Thank you.
Our tenth speaker is Lisa O'Connor.
If you give me one moment, if y'all gonna set up, please go ahead, because I think it's disruptive to these people who gonna come up here and speak. So, I'll give you a minute to try to set everything up.
Thank you, Senator.
Yes.
We'll try to put you on DVD in good light.
Ah, well, I'm not worried about that. I'm trying to make sure these citizens are not interrupted when they are speaking, so. We're ready, okay?
You ready?
Yes.
My name is Lisa O'Connor, and I reside at three-oh-five Troll Court, Fayetteville. And I'm here to read a letter which was given to me, so I'm reading someone else's letter. "To the Honorable Members of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, I am Robbie Hicks, Senior Assistant District Attorney and former President of the Cumberland County Bar. I regret being unable to appear personally with this request, but feeling compelled to protect and promote justice within our county. I have written you this heartfelt letter to request your assistance in protecting and hopefully strengthening the Cumberland County Court Library. The Cumberland County Public Library rightly describes itself as, quote, 'a dynamic, ever-growing public library system with the goal to serve an informed and progressive community.' The county library system provides modern library resources and services necessary to satisfy the evolving informational needs and recreational pursuits of the community, thus enhancing the quality of life in Cumberland County,' end quote. A vital branch of this valuable community resource is the meagerly-staffed Cumberland County Court Library. The Cumberland County Public Library maintains the Court Library, which is conveniently and properly located on the third floor of the Cumberland County Courthouse. This location is respectfully the only logical place to have a Law Library. According to the Cumberland County Public Library's website, the Court Library provides just the basic legal resources for the community, such as North Carolina laws and cases, federal laws and cases, and legal encyclopedias and digests. Historically, the Court Library's budget has not kept pace with the ever-rising cost of publication. Just like others in tough economic times, the Court Library has been forced to make sacrifices in its- Just like others in tough economic times, the Court Library has been forced to make sacrifices in its collection. Despite such setbacks and through the efforts of its highly dedicated and extremely valuable Law Librarian, the Court Library has been able to serve the needs of the Cumberland County Bar and the public. It has-